William and Dolores Arrola has been continued off calendar and won't be heard today.
Do a date insert?
Yeah, no specified date. But that was announced on the agenda, so it's not going to change.
Okay, the first order of business then, continuing on, would be the public comment. At this point, anyone who has anything they would like to comment that is not on today's agenda, this is your opportunity. Don't all leap your feet.
Don't all rush to podium.
Okay. Moving on now to the consent of Jensen, we have the minutes of a couple of meetings to take care of. First is the minutes of September 22nd. Do we have any questions or a motion to accept?
There was one omission that should be corrected on page six. Under paragraph eight, 2014-055, tentative parcel map for Susanna Pique Segal. About halfway down, there's a sentence that begins, "Proposed parcel would consist of an existing 1,300 plus or minus square foot house, et cetera." It should read, "Proposed parcel one would consist," et cetera.
Yes.
Did you get that?
I got that.
That's my only suggestion.
Are there any in the comments regarding those minutes? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
They're moving second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Aye, aye, aye. The next item is the approval of the minutes of October 13th. Do we have any comments or additions or questions?
Yes, yes. On page three, at the top of the page, under the heading Staff Discussion, it reads, "Miguel Contreras, Planner Two presented the item." I believe that should be Planner One.
That's on page three?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other additions?
Nope.
Yes, there's more. On page seven, at the top of the page, where it says, "Randy Schwam, attorney appearing on behalf of Ashley Bargenquestis." There should not be an apostrophe S at the end of Ms. Bargenquestis' name. And there's one more. On nine, it refers to an ag reserved, number 358, so forth, of land located at 1821 Hubbard Road in Mountain Ranch. That location is not in Mountain Ranch. It's miles from Mountain Ranch. And it was described in the resolution approving this differently.
What item is that?
Nine.
Page nine. My version of the minutes just have the signature page for page nine.
Yes, okay, page seven, paragraph nine.
Okay, item nine, all right.
And that change was made on the resolution that was for signature?
Any other additions?
No.
Do we have a motion?
So is the correction just to strike, "in Mountain Ranch"?
I would.
Okay.
It was described in the resolution differently as being so many miles southwest of the intersection of Armstrong and Hubbard Road. That's it.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
They're moving second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Aye, aye, aye. That was a forge ahead. The first public hearing, is that appeal, that is still on?
Yes.
The next one is the appeal of denial of personal cannabis cultivation registration application for assessed personal number 014-006-029. Gina, you're on.
All right. Okay, so as Ted's already explained, we have before us an appeal of a planning director's denial of a cannabis registration. It was a personal cannabis registration, 2016-923. So our reasons for the denial were based on false and misleading information. So the registration itself was for personal cultivation of 100 square feet. But in reality, they're actually cultivating in excess of possibly around 13,000 square feet. The registration evidence supported all personal cultivation. Every reference, every map was made to personal cultivation. Some of the biggest differences, if you, I should say, personal, some of the biggest differences, if you recall, between commercial and personal were some of the additional information and things that you needed to do in addition to the fee that was paid. So a personal cultivation registration is simply $100, where if you were to actually file for a commercial registration, that would be a $5,000 fee. In addition, you would have to get a waste discharge permit through the Water Quality Control Board, in addition to seller's permits and business licenses. And there's a whole variety of regulations that commercial cultivators are required to comply with where personal cultivation is not. So on the map here, this is actually the map that was submitted in the packet for personal registration. So as you can see, the area that they are illustrating as the cultivation site is, I would say is probably pretty reasonable, along with the 100 square feet. Looks like it would probably be about that. If you'll notice, it just sits to the west of the location of the house. This was their drawing of their plot plan submitted with the registration, again, showing a 10 by 10 plot, just 85 feet from the house. But here is an actual Google image dated May 31st. And if you'll notice that there is a couple areas of what we've identified as cultivation. You've got a significant area that is shown to the west. And then, of course, you've got two other areas that are shown just behind the house to the north and to the east that were not illustrated in the registration packet. The actual registration was submitted on June 30th. So obviously, by those pictures and this picture as well, the cultivation existed prior to the registration for personal grow. So here again, we've got two different aerial, another aerial photo dated June 10th, again, illustrating significant cultivation, approximately 13,000 square feet in size. Again, in September, August, September aerial photos still show the grow. In this case, you know, projects that are disapproved, SEQA does not apply. And in our recommendation, obviously, is to deny the appeal and upholding our denial of the registration based on the fact that the application was misleading in that what the applicant or the landowner should have been doing was actually registered for a commercial grow rather than personal.
Okay. Would the applicant like to say something?
Yes, thank you, Ashley Bargenquest, I'm here for Ms. Song Vang. First, I would like to say that the first images presented here, the one from May 31st, 2016, and June 10th, 2016, aren't really relevant to Ms. Vang's application submitted on June 30th because there is no legal application anywhere in the code to maintain previously cultivated levels. Ms. Vang did previously have larger cultivation on her property, but did not want to continue said large cultivation, would like to only move forward with the 100 square feet of personal cultivation. In my various communication with the Planning Department throughout the application process, I was assured that individuals could grow, you know, no more than they had grown, but they could grow less than they had previously grown. So the issue then becomes that Ms. Vang had not lowered or reduced her cultivation to the 10 by 10, 100 square feet in early September, August, September of 2016 after she had submitted her application for this smaller cultivation. If Calaveras County had not contemplated individuals growing in excess of what they requested, then perhaps a denial would be appropriate. However, the county did see this as something that might happen and created a section of the code to address it. Section 17.95.165J says that if you are, if an individual is growing beyond the allowable square footage of cannabis, that the registrant shall reduce to conform with requirements within 24 hours of receiving their registration or a notification by enforcement that they're in excess of what they've requested. Ms. Vang has never received this kind of notice. She did receive an abatement notice saying that she had no registration and that it was an unregistered cultivation, to which she responded by taking out not only everything in excess of 100 square feet, but everything. She removed all of it. And I believe that you have all received the packet from the continuance on October 13th that had the ample photographs of her abatement process. And in fact, the email from Ms. Sabrina Cable saying that, you know, they were very thorough in their abatement of it and that based on that, there would be no further issue there. So Ms. Vang shows that she wants to cooperate and comply with anything in the county. It's simply that moving forward, she would like to be able to plant her 100 square feet in the area submitted in her packet. And it's just a matter of following the process laid out by the county, which I believe is the appropriate thing to do in section 1795.165J. And so I would request that Ms. Vang have her registration for personal cultivation moving forward.
Do you have the application or a copy of the application?
Yes.
Can you read the statement at the bottom where they sign?
Oh, under penalty of perjury, I understand, hang on, I struggle with my trifocals these days. "The undersigned certifies that all information provided in this application and any documents, photographs, and identification materials required to be shown or provided in conjunction with this registration are complete, truthful, and accurate. By submitting this application, registrant understands and acknowledges that any fees collected for processing the application is nonrefundable regardless of whether or not the registration or renewal is granted."
Thank you.
Gina, I have some questions. In the application form, where she listed 100 square feet for the maximum total canopy area, that refers to what she's applying for?
Exactly.
And the photo, I think it's figure one, that's in the staff report, has that little red circle?
This photo?
Yeah. The red circle is, did you understand that to mean that's what she's applying for?
This is the photograph that she submitted along with the plot plan and the application for registration illustrating the location of the cultivation area. And as you can see, it's much less cultivation than what you see in the other photos. I don't know what date this photo is, but to me, this clearly depicts a much different cultivation site than what was actually out there at the time of registration and subsequent to registration as well.
Was it the Planning Department's understanding that the reason this photo was submitted was to depict what she planned to cultivate?
Yes.
Okay. Did this applicant ever reveal prior to the denial of her application that she had been cultivating over 13,000 square feet?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Did this applicant ever reveal to the Planning Department before her application was denied that she was in fact, or had been cultivating over 13,000?
To my knowledge, no, there was no evidence in the record that there was any communication between our staff and the registrant regarding the size of her cultivation. It was just upon the verification of her registration packet that it was discovered that there was in excess of 100 square feet. Therefore, we denied the registration based on false and misleading information.
Is there any provision in the ordinance that obligated this applicant to disclose how much she was actually cultivating?
Well, the intent, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but the intent of the ordinance was to allow individuals to register what they were growing. And if she had intended to only grow 100 square feet, I suppose she could have reduced her square footage, but even in August and in the August, September photographs still showed in excess of 100 square feet. If you're going to register 100 square feet, then that's what you should be growing. That was the whole intent of allowing people to register.
Is it the case, though, with personal grows, that you don't have to have grown marijuana on the site at all previously, unlike commercial?
Correct.
So she could have been growing nothing more, 100 square feet or 15,000 square feet, and still she could register for 100, couldn't she?
Correct.
All right. And this 17.95.165J that counsel referred to, that applies to personal grows as well as commercial ones, doesn't it?
Yes, it applies to all cultivation.
Okay. So the way I read that, this applicant could wait until after she received her registration or notice to reduce before reducing to 100 square feet. Wouldn't that be correct?
I suppose that's your interpretation. I don't see it that way, sorry.
Okay, well, that's how I read it.
Okay.
Because it says, "You have to reduce to conform to the requirements within 24 hours of receiving the registration or notice from a law enforcement official." To me, that means after.
Yeah, that's certainly a correct interpretation of the code.
Okay.
I think that the intent of that provision was that someone had registered for, say, 16,000 square feet, and we go out there, investigate, and find out there's 18,000 square feet. Or they were at 23,000 square feet in the exceedance of what was allowed, so they can reduce it back down to 22,000 square feet, which is the maximum permitted. In this case, however, she clearly knew that she was growing a commercial crop out there. 13,000 square feet is extremely different than 100 square feet. She registered for a personal grow, depicted a personal grow on her application, but then was cultivating commercially. And that's why we rejected the application, not because we didn't give her time to reduce it, was that it was clearly misleading. She had a commercial cultivation operation going on out there, and yet applied for a personal grow of 100 square feet. There wasn't any sort of, oh gee, I didn't measure properly, or I was slightly over. This was clear misrepresentation of what was intended to occur on this site. There can be no misunderstanding that someone who registered for a personal grow but planted after the allowance for commercial, you know, the May 10th deadline. And when she submitted her application on June 30th, she had 13,000 square feet of cultivation going on out there. This is clear misrepresentation. I don't believe that the argument that Ms. Bargenquest is saying that, well, she could have reduced it if she'd been notified, applies here.
If I may respond?
Well, let me make one comment. I don't see anything in this ordinance that required this applicant to disclose what she was cultivating at all. I don't see it.
I do.
Where?
The fact that she was growing at a commercial level and she did not register the commercial grow no longer becomes a code enforcement issue. It becomes criminal. She did not register, she was growing at a commercial level, and that is now criminal because she did not register. Under registrations that decided to deceive or not be truthful, it went under code enforcement, and it went under abatements and compliances. Those that did not register, as Mrs. Vang did not, for a commercial grow have clearly violated the law. And she signed a statement at the bottom of her application that she was being truthful under perjury, and she was not truthful, misleading. And I believe that that right there says enough to me. When she signed that dotted line that said, "I'm applying for 100 square feet, and I am telling you the truth," and then she's growing 13,000 square feet, it's a slap in the face to every registered grower that paid $5,000 to register, that registered with Department of Water Resources and paid those fees. She did not. She deceived the whole process.
But see, that assumes that she had an obligation to apply for a commercial registration by virtue of what she was cultivating before the ordinance went into effect. And I don't see that obligation in the ordinance or anyplace else. I do not see any place in this ordinance which we have been applying according to its terms that either obliged her to disclose what her previous cultivation was or obliged her to apply for a commercial registration simply because she was growing commercially prior to the ordinance. I do not see anything in this ordinance that prohibits this applicant from deciding that she doesn't want to have a commercial grow, even though she had one, doesn't want to have one anymore, just wants to have 100 square feet. That's what she applied for, clearly. And I do not see anything in this ordinance that prohibits her from doing that.
You don't think signing a perjury statement and being truthful?
I think she was truthful.
I think to me, the minute she signed that application and was not truthful and was misleading through the entire process, she violated the terms of her application and registration right then and there, the minute she signed the dotted line.
I would agree. Section N7 applies in this case.
M7?
N, as in Nancy.
Okay.
165 N7. "As of May 10, 2016, all grading and earth movement in the portion of a parcel to be used for cultivation shall have been completed, other than that grading necessary for proportional amendment, adjustment to the cultivation area to comply with the setback requirements of this chapter. A resident seeking to conduct grading for the purpose beyond May 10th must provide the Planning Department with a copy of current grading permit for the, and that doesn't really apply there. No additional grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing or expanding. Any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th, 2016." She clearly did this.
I would disagree. I don't believe that she did any earth moving to establish or expand, simply to limit after that date.
Well, here is the application of what was happening. This is what you submitted as part of the, your application.
This is...
And then, in May 31st, there's another picture that shows a much larger area of cultivation and the removal of trees, the, you know, that's considered grading, that's considered earth movement.
Was that done prior or after May 10th?
Prior to, my understanding is, you can see, these plants are well established. This would be more than a simple 30-day period, or rather, 20-day period of growth.
But the requirement that I'm looking at, which is under 17.95.165N7, only applies to registration of sites for commercial cultivation of medical cannabis, and she did not apply for that.
But anyone growing in the county, every, this requirement, this ordinance applies to every cultivator in the county.
It says "commercial."
It says "commercial."
Clearly, it does not, I mean, if someone was to rewrite it and include both the words in there, then it would be all inclusive, but all it says is "commercial."
But you're only a personal grower if you're growing 100 square feet. If you're growing more than that, you qualify as a commercial grower.
It's supposed to be for personal use.
Well, see, that assumes that she had, that because she was cultivating, call it 13,000 square feet, that she had an obligation, when she went to apply for registration, to apply for a commercial grow when she wasn't going to continue to grow commercially.
But she continued to grow at a commercial level until they abated in October.
September.
Which is permissible.
August and September, what was the dates?
September 20th through 25th. They had wanted to get everything together to be able to abate it all.
Had it bear fruit? Was the abatement part of a harvest?
No. The pictures...
I see them going, I see plants sitting in a woodchipper, but I don't see them actually going through a woodchipper. There is a difference.
There is certainly a difference. I thought that the Vangs were very thorough in their photographic evidence. It was not part of a harvest, they simply took these down. I believe these plants were premature to harvest.
Fruit was not fully...
No.
Developed?
To my understanding, no.
If you call it fruit.
Flower, I believe. I think what ultimately is happening here is that the intent of what the Planning Department wished to happen may have been one thing, but the letter of the law simply does not require Ms. Vang to continue cultivating at levels she previously cultivated at, did not obligate her to disclose how much she had done, nor did it obligate her to continue in any way or only apply for what she had fully done previously. She was completely truthful about her future intent, and this was an application for future registration and cultivation in the county. There is a specific code section that addresses if too much cultivation is taking place, and Ms. Vang has demonstrated that she is willing to cooperate and comply in the fact that she abated everything for the comfort of the county.
This was not an intent of the future?
This was not an intent of the future on her application, and the minute she signed that dotted line saying she was being truthful, she stops and gets denied at that point in my eyes, because why do I need to go further down the ordinance when she violated her application from day one? There's her violation. She was not truthful, and the ordinance, you had to have established the grow by May 10th for personals, she could put it in later, but the moment she signed the application, I don't need to look any further. She was untruthful, and it point-blank says, "If you don't tell the truth on the application, you're denied." In her pictures that she submitted, in her area that she was going to grow in, she says it's right here, instead of saying, "It's right here, it's 13,000 square feet." She was, for me, if you hear what Gina said earlier in reading the application and the perjury statement, she lied from the get-go, and that was it for me. It doesn't even matter how much further you want to go.
I can understand your interpretation. I feel that it is also a clear interpretation that as an application for registration, this is a statement about future intent. Her pictures indicate where she planned to have her personal cultivation, and I believe that her statement was not perjury, it was simply about her future intent rather than her current activities, and as there is no legal obligation to continue her previous cultivation, I would request that she be granted a personal cultivation registration.
And you don't feel there's any responsibility in the fact that she never registered a 13,000-square-foot grow? You have the people out there wanting to become legit and prove to the people that they can pay their fees, comply with county codes, state codes, and she violated the entire process and hurts what is trying to get done here with people coming up and being honest. And, I mean, I heard grower after grower after grower, "We want to come into compliance," and then we have something like this come forward. She has completely acted in, I'm just, I am stunned that we can't see past her signing a statement and lying.
I would simply say that I don't think it's fair to force Ms. Vang to apply and continue commercial cultivation if she has no intent of continuing commercial activity.
But she did through the entire process, all the way up to September.
And she abated every single plant.
She continued commercial cultivation the whole way through, even signing a statement and submitting her photos of where she's going to grow.
About her future intent to cultivate her personal cultivation. Again, I would just point you towards the section clearly created by Calaveras County in 1795-165-J that says, if they are cultivating more than they're allowed, that they be given a notice and they abate. As Mr. Maurer pointed out, this was intended for individuals who were growing thousands of feet more than they were allowed to do, and I don't think there's a legal difference in this code between abating it to that personal and abating it a 10,000-square-foot difference upon inspection.
And I will point you to the perjury statement that she signed and how the ordinance addresses if you are not truthful in your application, it's an automatic denial, and then that is what is held to the standard. We're -- you have something to say?
I'll wait till you're done.
I'm never done, go ahead.
I see your point of view, and I do understand what she's trying to say at the same time. As I see it, it does clearly state in the ordinance that an abatement to size can happen later here as per J. So, with the fact of knowing that, and if she actually understood the ordinance, would she not be telling the truth, even if she was growing over that amount, if she physically abated prior to actually having a harvest? Because she did it.
If she had applied, if she'd applied for commercial cultivation--
She knew, you could assume either way, you know? But, you know, we can't pry the real information out of her head.
We can--
Either way, what it comes down to is the fact the ordinance says this, so if, even if she does it later, and if she did have that area done prior to May 10 also, in the grading, then she was telling the truth as per the way the ordinance is written.
As per the ordinance is written, as per the ordinance is written, she should have paid a $5,000 commercial registration fee. She did not. She violated the ordinance from day one. She violated it, right from day one. She had 13,000 square feet growing, she did not register as a commercial grower, so every, I'm looking through the code, she violated absolutely the entirety of the ordinance.
I would also like to point out that this denial occurred on August 15, 2016, which is before the last photograph. The denial was based solely on prior cultivation, not ongoing cultivation, which I believe is also problematic.
So, she did get 24 hours' notice, and she didn't abate until September.
No, she was not given 24 hours' notice.
She was denied, that meant she should have abated, and she had 24 hours in which to do it, according to the code that you are quoting, and she did not abate until September.
Unless she undergoes an appeal process, which I believe is what's happening right now.
Well, that's not what you said earlier. You were bragging about the fact she abated, and you read the ordinance and quoted 24 hours' abatement. If she was notified a month previous--
If she was notified, given her, by, if she was notified, excuse me, notified with her, either her registration, which I would assume is--
Which meant abatement.
You're given your registration--
Which meant abatement.
And then you bring it down to it.
Which meant abatement.
Or if you were given a notice to abate. She was given her notice to abate.
Denial.
When she was denied her registration. Of course, during the ongoing appeal process of that decision, an individual doesn't have to abate it, because if they are then granted it at their appeal, they are continuing to be allowed to, and the decision was not standing. So, the fact that she abated entirely simply shows her cooperation and her willingness to cooperate and comply with the county regardless of whether or not she had ongoing rights. The appeal process is here so that individuals don't have to take out all their plants.
She violated the entire ordinance by not applying for a commercial grow license, period.
I would simply ask where there is a legal obligation to continue previous cultivation levels.
I think that lies in 1795-160, nuisance declared.
Exactly.
Other than medical cannabis cultivated on a registered medical cannabis cultivation site in accordance with this chapter, and a 13,000-square-foot grow requires a commercial cultivation registration application. All cultivation of medical cannabis in any amount or quantity, and including any medical cannabis nursery, is hereby declared to be unlawful in all zones and a public nuisance that may be abated and subject to enforcement pursuant to Article II of this chapter. She was violating the terms of this ordinance in its entirety. There's no one specific point that says you have to do this, you can't do that. The ordinance required her to register as a commercial cannabis cultivator. If she were just appealing the provision that we did not give her 24-hour notice, I would accept her argument, but she was in violation of the entirety of the code by presenting this cultivation site as a personal caregiver grow, when she clearly, at the time that she registered, was growing commercially.
But did not intend to continue to commercially grow, and this application was simply meant as her future intent.
How can you not intend to continue when you continue for another two months?
Well--
There's no logic to the argument, I'm sorry.
This denial took place before any photographs of post-application were taken. This denial was based entirely upon her previous cultivation on her property.
What she was doing when she applied.
Well, on June 10th was the last photograph that had been taken before this denial occurred, so what was currently happening on her--
Was she not cultivating 13,000 square feet on June 30th?
She, I don't know if it was a full 13,000 square feet, however--
Was she growing more than 100 square feet?
Yes, she was, and as per Section 1795-165-J, she was allowed to abate that over her registration upon given notice.
She misrepresented her--
She did not misrepresent her future intent, which is what an application or a registration is.
She misrepresented what she was doing at the time. No future intent is what she was doing.
I think ultimately this comes down to whether or not a registration for future intent versus current activity and what's obligated by the code.
So, shouldn't we have a registration for the current activity? We obviously have registration according to, according to Ms. Bargenquist. We have a registration for future intent, so what about the registration for the current activity? Because there was clearly no abatement of that even subsequent to the registration of a personal grow.
Well, if you look at the form that she signed, in one place, it's number eight, it's supposed to say, "List maximum, quote, total canopy area is defined in Chapter 17.95.150" or in FF. She puts in 100 square feet.
Correct.
When you look at 17-95.150 FF, it says, "Total canopy area means the gross area of cannabis planting covered by the canopy of all marijuana to be cultivated on the parcel, et cetera." I take that to mean that's calling for a description of what it is you plan to cultivate under the registration for which you are applying, not something else. Now, it may well be that cultivating 13,000 square feet and continuing to cultivate it for some time is prohibited by something, but it's not, does not give rise to a false or misleading application, which is on the basis for denial, because the--
So, regardless of what is actually on the ground.
The application only is asking for what it is you're trying to register, not what you're growing now. That's what it does under this ordinance. And I understand people's frustration, but--
I suppose every commercial cultivator could have done the same thing if they were as smart as Ms. Vang.
They could have, and they would have gotten themselves abated, not because they had a false or misleading application, unless they intended actually to continue growing commercially, which she pretty clearly did not, okay? Because she did abate.
Yes, but she abated it two months after she registered for personal grow.
Attempted to register and was denied. If she had been granted, she would have had 24 hours from getting that registration to cut it down to 200, to 100 square feet. And so, when it was not granted, okay, the trigger for that abatement under paragraph J never happened, okay? So, she was left with then an illegal grow, which she did abate when she got the notice, not a subsection J notice, but a notice that says, "You're illegal, get rid of it." And that's what she did. So, I cannot see the false or misleading statement here. I'm sorry.
Really?
Not there.
Yes.
So, under page one of two, medical cannabis cultivation--
You're talking about the application?
Yeah, I'm medical cannabis cultivation and the landowner consent. I, or the trust or business entity represent, I am aware that the applicant is in the process of applying to the Calaveras County Department to register his or her medical cannabis cultivation site on the property described in above in conformance with all of the provisions of She wasn't in conformance, she was 13,000 square feet and applied for a 100-square-foot grow. She was not in compliance of 17.95 in any way. I can read through form after form after form here, and it says she's in compliance with 17.95. Being 100 square feet to apply for it and growing at 13,000 square feet is nowhere near compliance of 17.95 in any way, shape, and form. The minute she signed that perjury statement and said she was truthful, she submitted a map showing a teeny 100-square-foot, or square feet, and at the time had 13 square feet going. I am baffled at how this whole process was going to be about legitimizing this industry, and she has destroyed the face of the value of this industry and becoming legal. She has violated everything in 17.95, and how that is not being seen, I'm not sure. And it's like I said, yes, you could wait for code compliance to come and cite her and tell her to eradicate, or we could have just called the sheriff and said, "Go arrest her." She violated the ordinance in its entirety.
I would point out that Section 17.95 includes Section 165-J, which contemplates exactly this.
You think that her statement of perjury and being truthful was accurate from the get-go?
I believe it was an accurate statement of her future intent.
I think it's an accurate statement of what she was registering for.
Pardon?
It was an accurate statement of what she was registering for, which is the purpose, the whole purpose of the registration form, is to disclose what it is you're applying to get. She's applying to get a--
Her original intent could have changed in my mind also. You know, she could have originally intended to go a certain amount of square foot, which therefore her preparation, but at the time of registration, she made a sound decision that she wanted to go to a medical size, so it's all speculation on what her intent was. And at this point, you cannot pry that out of her head, one way or the other. And as per the way the law's written, that we have to stand by until it's redone in February or whatever, it opens the door for this exact issue. So, it's something definitely to take note of in the future when it has to be re-looked at. But I would concur with what Kelly has to say.
We have public comment.
Can we call for public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll change now to the public comment. Who's in the audience who has some feeling on this issue would like to express it.
I guess I'm commenting as a member of the public or his staff. Ethan Turner, Deputy County Counsel. I mean--
Please sign in and--
Sure.
--give your names.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there's no sign-on sheet here. When she registered for 100-square-foot grow, and then, this photo was taken in August of a 13,000-square-foot grow, how does that not show intent of, to deceive the planning department? I mean, she, if the registration was her future intent, and she said 100 square feet, and then grew 13,000 square feet, I don't see how that's not false or misleading information. I mean, and what was the date of the abatement? You know?
September 20th, 2025.
Okay. And so, she would have had 10 days to abate once she received a notice of violation before fines started to accrue, and she was also committing a misdemeanor. I mean, when she continued to grow after the notice of violation was received. I mean, I just fail to see how registering for 100 square feet, giving a plot plan, showing 100 square feet, and then proceeding to grow for a number of months, 13,000 square feet, is not false or misleading information. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that you have to look at the intent, and if she had, after registering for a personal grow, if she had gone out there and then cut back those plants to a personal grow size on her own, that would have shown that that's really what her intent was. By waiting until she had been inspected-- By waiting until she had been inspected, months later, and then, um, before she did anything, to me, that shows that her intent was to continue to grow as long as she could get away from, with it. So, so I would think that the planning department's action is proper. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public would like to jump into this? If not, we'll come back to the, the appellant.
I would, I'll let her speak, but I have something to say, too.
I would simply respond to that by saying that intent is impossible to determine, as has been pointed out. Uh, we can't go back and look inside Ms. Vang's mind, but we do know that she abated everything and that she didn't wait, uh, for a mature harvest, that in fact, as soon as she was told to abate, she did. Uh, she simply was never given the abatement order, um, that would trigger her not receiving her personal application. I believe that if we simply look at the letter of the law here, and the black letter law, that regardless of intent of what it was supposed to mean, it clearly indicates that she was applying for her future cultivation, that she had no obligation to disclose or continue her previous levels of cultivation, and that if she had been given 24 hours notice of her registration, that at that point, she would have had to lower it. And then if you look at her goodwill at abating everything, I think that it's clear that Ms. Vang is not the terrible downfall of this industry, but rather a woman who decided that she didn't want to continue commercial cultivation in the growing quagmire of regulation in this state.
So I want to point you to M2. In page 11 of seventeen point nine five-
Okay.
It clearly states, "The maximum area of cultivation on the parcel shall be, for personal cultivation registration, 100 square feet of total canopy size. For caregiver cultivation, which she did not apply for, it would have been the 200 square feet. Under no circumstances," should I repeat that? "Under no circumstances shall any non-commercial medical cannabis cultivation site contain more than 200 square feet of total canopy size."
Which is why section seventeen point nine five point one six five J exists, so that if someone is violating that, they can be informed correctly and the proper procedures that were put in place by the County of Calaveras can be followed.
She was informed her application was being denied because she was not truthful, and it took her another month to decide to remove the plants.
If that requirement had said, "You will be, your registration is approved if you change it," or that it is the size that is wrong, it was about misleading information-
So you don't think she was there to deceive us-
She was not given-
-in the planning department? Seriously?
Seriously.
Okay. I, I see so many things in here that she violated, right out of the get-go, that I, I can't even go to that next item that you're referencing, because she intentionally tried to deceive, to circumvent the entire process that was put into place. I, I just, I'm going to stand on the application that she was mis, not telling the truth. She signed a perjury statement. She never registered commercial. It point-blank says in here she can only have 100 square feet. She violated her application and registration the moment she signed the dotted line. She was 13,000 square feet. It clearly says in M2, "No more than 100." You don't need to be told to abate 13,000 square feet when you applied for 100. That's common sense.
I'm afraid that-
And why is she not here for the second time?
Well, I am her attorney-
Okay.
And am allowed to represent her here.
It would be nice to be able to ask her questions and that she, if she had come. The second time, she didn't appear before us.
I don't believe there's any obligation for her to be here-
There is no obligation, but we've asked questions that you have said, "Well, I don't know what her intent was." It would have been nice to know her intent.
Her intent was to have a future personal cultivation. She clearly indicated that. All the language indicates that these cultivation applications are for levels of canopy to be cultivated in the future, and there is no obligation to continue to grow at pre-just cultivated levels.
On June 30th, she applied to grow 100 square feet, right?
And if the county-
And that was her future intent, and by September, she still had 13,000 square feet. Her intent was to finish growing her 13,000 square feet.
And if the county code did not contemplate a way to remove cultivation, uh, over what was requested, then I would agree with you, however, there is clear-
A statement of perjury and a license being applied for, for 100 square feet, does cover that entire process of seventeen point nine five.
I simply believe we disagree on what she was saying. You believe it was her current action, and I believe it was for her future cultivation.
Do you want to say anything, Ted?
Yeah, well, a minute.
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, the rest of you said everything you need to say?
I just have one other comment, which is, when I look at paragraph seventeen point nine five point one six five M, Commissioner, please refer to, M says, "The following additional requirements apply to the registration of sites for personal caregiver cultivation of medical cannabis. To the maximum area of cultivation on the parcel shall be, for personal, 100 square feet." I think that's just defining what you can apply for, what's the maximum allowed. And since you can have both a personal and a caregiver, each 100, subsection C, makes it clear that it's not going to be more than 200 that's allowed. That's all true. She only applied for 100. She's within M2. And the only, you know, to, to find against this applicant, I think we have to imply an obligation for her to apply for a commercial grow, and I can't find it in the ordinance.
You don't think, once she filled out the application, she needed to follow these guidelines? You think the guidelines didn't apply to her when she completed that application and signed it?
And, as counsel has pointed out, under J, she, she could wait until her registration was accepted, and then within 24 hours, knock it down to 100 square feet. That's what the ordinance permitted her to do.
It was never accepted. At any one point, so that 24 hours never kicked in, you received a denial letter instead.
She agreed to the terms of this ordinance for 100 square feet the minute she signed her perjury statement. What, what do we tell everyone else that put forth a $5,000 application fee for commercial cultivation of this size? What do we tell everyone else that had to go through the rigorous, um, you know, very expensive process of getting a waste discharge permit, in addition to getting their background checks? Um, the list goes on and on. I, I just think this is, I mean, it's very obvious in our mind that it's, it's deliberate. They, she wanted to avoid all of the requirements that everyone else, growing this size cultivation, had to go through. If she intended to only cultivate 100 square feet, then that grow should have been knocked down immediately upon registration to 100 square feet. How far in the future do we have to look? A year? Six months? I mean, what, what, what do we mean by future intent?
I would say within 24 hours of that notice.
If she hadn't have been notified, I bet you anything, this grow would still be out there, and she would have harvested by now. 13,000 square feet for only having to put up a $100 application fee and not having to go through any of the other requirements that everyone else, at a commercial-sized grow, had to endure. They had to go through it. How are we going to explain that to everyone else?
I think you would tell them that if anybody tried this, they would get a notice to abate, and they wouldn't get to harvest anything, which is exactly what happened here. It was actually what happened here.
I agree with you, but it all comes down to opinion, and when it comes into this case. And, uh, I, I, you know, my speculation and opinion is that she tried to do over what she, she wrote down as her intent, but that's my opinion. Do I have proof beyond doubt?
Yes, you do. I think the photograph of her evidence is-
Well, it was abated beforehand, and as per what the urgency ordinance is written.
The urgency ordinance is written as this. If you apply for an application to grow 100 square feet, that's what you should be growing. It does not say-
I would agree that's, that's what they should be growing, but someone needs to go down through, through the, all, all this and reword it properly next year, so that's covered.
I think it's covered. I think the minute she signed a perjury statement, saying she was telling the truth, that she's applying for a future intent of 100 square feet, that is all she should have had on the property. She bypassed every process. She did not tell the truth from the get-go of what was on her property. She did not submit diagrams. This is what I have. When you get time to look in at my registration, come out and tell me to abate it, and I'll do it within 24 hours. What she did was lie, right up front, by saying, "I want to do 100 square feet. I'm not going to tell you I have 13,000 square feet, even though the application I'm signing says I'm only doing 100 square feet." We don't have any confirmation of abatement, just so you know. The code compliance department has never gone out on-site to physically verify, um, the, the claim of, um, complete eradication of that grow.
If you look at the emails-
I know what the email says, but there has never been any physical identification or confirmation of the removal of those plants.
No inspection have occurred on the ground either.
We simply accepted the photographs, and there's been no actual on-site visit of this site. Under seventeen nine five one seven zero, "Registration of medical cannabis cultivation site for two into this chapter may be invalidated by the planning department for any of the following reasons. Failure to comply with the requirements of this chapter," which she did, she wanted 100, went to 13. "Other violations of federal, state, or local law." She violated local law because she did not register as commercial. There's another reason for denial. "Registration was in error or was accomplished under false pretenses." There's another reason for denial. "Applicant registration contained false or misleading registration." There's another reason for denial. How many reasons do you need in this ordinance? I, I don't get it. I, I mean, I'm just sitting here baffled.
I know there's some language in there that talks prospectively about the intent of someone to grow. That language was provided so that those people who had prepared their site but actually hadn't been cultivating yet, and because of the time that this was, uh, developed in, in May, most of the, uh, plants were not in the ground yet. They're still in starts, they're inside, you know, the plants don't typically go out on the site until around June 1st. So the language, so the perspective was intended to say, "Here's what we've prepared for, here's the area that is going to be planted." To say, I, I think it is a twisting of the intent of the board. The board clearly wanted to, um, stop expansion of cultivation area until we had a preliminary ordinance in place. And they said, "We're going to freeze everything, it's what's there on the ground today." And, and, but because a lot of people had invested a lot of time and money into, um, into cultivation activity, but actually didn't, weren't growing yet, um, they agreed that they could allow for people who had graded the site, had invested in irrigation systems, or all the other costs associated with it, to be able to move forward with what they had invested in so far. But I don't think that it was intended that, that it was like, "Well, we're, we're only going to apply for a 100-square-foot cultivation as a personal grow, and that is our intent, that's what our future plan is." When we're clearly growing more than that at this point in time, the idea was that it was to register what the area was disturbed, the area that was actually growing at the time. I believe that the intent of the board and the, in the, uh, creation of this was, if you were growing more than 100 square feet, you were required to register as a commercial cultivator.
That's right.
It may not say that specifically, but I think that if you look at the entirety of the ordinance, and particularly the section of, um, one six oh, that if you're not, if you're growing, and you are, um, you must register what it is you're growing.
Well, it says it right there.
Otherwise, it is a nuisance.
Yeah.
And is to be abated.
It says it right there in one nine five one seven zero. "The registrant, after registering, fails or refuses to inform the county of alterations to the property that would compromise, compromise the original registration is means for denial." She did not inform the county of 13,000 square feet, which compromised it. There are so many things in here.
I think that the clarification on the intent of the board is very helpful for future use, and perhaps in redrafting of this ordinance past the interim ordinance. However, what Ms. Vang had to go by was the language of the ordinance, and what we are here to review today is the denial of the registration application, and that is based solely on the imagery taken after May 10th, uh, that there is evidence that exceeds total canopy area. Because this was given on August 15th, the basis for this denial was the previous cultivation that was evidenced by photographs from May 31st and June 10th. Um, and there is nothing in this ordinance, clearly, without knowing the intent of the board, that you had to register for what you had done previously. In multiple communications with the planning department, I asked if one had to maintain previously cultivated levels, and while they didn't quite understand why you would want to grow less than you previously had, they informed me that, yeah, you could grow less.
Under a commercial license, not personal, come on.
They did not clarify that.
And you know what? The intent is here. You skipped right to, in your letter to the planning commissioners, to review the letter of this law, but you skipped over the entire portion that invalidated her license. One seven point one nine five one seven zero throws your entire argument in the garbage can.
The entire basis of the denial is that cultivation prior to her application exceeded what she asked for. I see nothing here-
Once she applied, it point-blank says in here, "She had to inform the planning department if she was not in compliance." It also says if she violated local laws, state or federal, which she is clearly in violation, she is denied. So why don't we go back and read and study one nine five, nine five point one seven zero, instead of jumping forward to eradication, because she doesn't apply, she doesn't comply upfront, so let's not go to the back end first.
The denial of her application is based upon there being more cultivation than she was applying for in the future. I think it's clear that her application was meant as a future intent, um, and I don't believe that the law clearly indicated that she had any obligation to do anything else. As I said, the code clearly contemplates cultivation in excess upon granting of a registration.
If it was future-
And if that was not the case, then that section simply wouldn't be there.
Did she finish growing her 100 square feet, or did she eradicate it also?
She eradicated everything as a show of good faith to the county.
To keep from getting arrested.
Well, suppose, suppose she started off with the intent to have a commercial grow, which she had, so we have to assume she intended to have it, and then because the requirements for a commercial grow under this ordinance were perceived by her to be too onerous, not worth it to her, didn't want to do it under this ordinance, so she applied for a personal grow. And that's all she was willing to, to have thereafter. And that's all she would have gotten if her application had been accepted. She would have gotten a registration for 100 square feet, and then, within 24 hours, if she was following the ordinance, she'd have to cut it down to 100 square feet. Now, there seems to be an undercurrent here that she was never going to comply with subsection J. In other words, her real plan was to apply for 100 square feet, and then just not follow subsection J and go ahead and harvest her commercial grow, but there's nothing in the record to support that.
I, I, no, that's, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, at the time that she registered, she was cultivating commercial-sized cul, uh, area, commercial-sized crop. And, and if she had intended to only cultivate 100 square feet- And, and if she had intended to only cultivate 100 square feet, why did she not reduce it at that point in time? When she knew that she was only going to grow 100 square feet? I understand that the code says that you are allowed to, that you're required to remove it within 24 hours of notification. She knew, at the time that she applied, that she was in violation. And that by not reducing it to 100 square feet when she applied, that was a violation of the code.
But the time under the code to reduce hadn't arrived.
You can...
It hadn't arrived.
Personal opinion? Intent? And the...
I don't... Mr. Booster, I mean, you're, the time for abating hadn't planned...
I would ask whether or not public comment is allowed at this point.
This is staff. Maybe it would be good if Ethan's out at the table there?
Yeah, I can sit down at the table without help.
He's an attorney for the planning department.
I appreciate that. It just usually, there's one attorney for the planning department.
Growing in violation of the terms of the code is illegal. I mean, the, it may have been, she may have not been required to abate in order to maintain her registration 24 hours after receiving her registration, but she was in violation of the law. It was a misdemeanor.
If we would like to debate that issue, I think that it's another one. But if we could address just the registration here, I think that's what really, this is supposed to be about.
No, I would suggest that if the planning commission doesn't find that she was providing false and misleading information by providing a drawing and stating that she was going to cultivate 100 square feet, they could deny it on other grounds and change their findings. And those, and such findings would be that she was violating local law and state law and federal law. I mean, so, I mean, if, if you're, if you're going to get hung up on the issue of miss, false, and misleading information, in the, you could deny it on other grounds.
I'm inclined to agree with the planning department's evaluation, just because I think that she, you might be able to, to wordsmith things around in a way that makes it sound like she had noble intentions, but I'm not sure that that's really what was going on. I, I think that she, she didn't, when, when she found out that there was a problem, she didn't abate in a, in a timely way. And, and I think that...
I would like to take full responsibility for that, then, because when they received this, I was retained, and they asked if they needed to abate. I informed them that there is an appeal process for exactly this reason. So it was not, she, she asked me for that. So I would like to make sure that that intent, that act is not used as intent for Ms. Vang, as I was under the impression that this appeals process is in place so that individuals don't have to abate everything until the decision.
So anyway, I'm, I'm inclined to go that direction, just because of the fact that it just doesn't seem to me that she's acted in good faith through the whole thing.
I would just point out her active abatement.
But how do you put yourself in somebody else's mind to say that that's what they were thinking or weren't thinking? That's, that's a difficult thing, and that's not what we're paid to do. But I think we, we try and do what's obvious. What's obvious to me is that she was not being straightforward. Are there any other comments on the planning commission before we move on?
I simply think it comes...
I do have a question for council, county council, which is, the application was denied, as I read, solely on the ground that it was, it contained false or misleading information.
I believe there were two grounds for denial. I don't have the resolution in front of me. There was also exceeding the maximum canopy size for a personal grow under 1795165J. So there's, so that was one basis. The second was false or misleading information as described in 1795170A4.
Let me find it.
Is that what, since I don't have a copy of the resolution, I only am going on when I analyzed it earlier, so...
Oh.
There is a, a copy of the denial.
So 1795.165J is the same one that we're calling into question here?
The only indication on the registration application denial is false or misleading information.
That's the box that's checked.
Yeah.
Right, I'm, I'm, the resolution that was provided has two separate bases that it's asking the planning commission to make findings on. So the planning commission would then have to determine, if to the extent that that was not checked in the denial letter, then the planning commission would have to determine what the impact of omitting one of those would be on the denial letter.
Well, my, my question is, given the basis for denial, is it proper for this commission to affirm the planning department's decision on the basis of something else, such as other violations of federal, state, or local law? Because we could, we could invalidate every one of these, I suppose, violating state law.
I mean, I, I think that the planning commission could decide that the applicant was not given adequate notice of additional bases for denial, if it wished to, since there wouldn't have been opportunity to prepare to argue that today. And with that information, it could continue the hearing to allow preparation, or it could just simply deny. And I think there's a lot of discretion here for the planning. I don't think that there's a lot of constraint in this particular appeal. I think the planning commission has the discretion to interpret the urgency ordinance and the intent of the board, if, if the intent needs to be, sorry, if the intent needs to be reached. I think there's a lot of discretion for the, for the, for the planning commission. I don't think that there would be a de facto violation of due process by finding, by making findings that were provided in advance by the planning department in the staff report and in the proposed resolution, because that was provided in advance. So, I, I mean, it's, it's really up to the planning commission to determine what the effect is. I, I'm sorry, I can't give a, a straight yes or no answer. It really is your choice.
Right, yeah.
So I guess the question boils down to 95170A4. Application for registration contained false or misleading information. Do you agree?
No.
You do not agree that submitting a map with 100 square feet instead of 13,000 square feet was not false and misleading?
Correct. Because the application is supposed to describe what it is she's applying for. There's nothing in that application form that calls upon her to disclose what was on the ground then.
And A5, the registrant, after registering, fails or refuses to inform the county of alterations to the property that would compromise, compromise the original registration. You don't think there was any compromise to that registration?
Not when she has 24 hours after registration to get rid of the excess under this ordinance.
But she didn't inform. She misled the county.
There were no changes to the property after her application. The image from June 10th to August...
She did not inform the county that she was not in compliance with 17.95.
Wait, can you repeat that, please, because...
There were, the section that was just read is about any alteration to the property.
No. Refuses to inform the county, alterations to the property, okay, that would compromise the original registration. Those alterations to the property were not permitted.
The only alterations that happened after her registration were her abatement, which were communicated to the county. We have the photographs provided by council from June 10th to August to September photograph. It doesn't have a specific date. Those are the same areas.
I mean, the only alterations after she applied were going the other way.
Would be the abatement.
To get rid of the plants.
It was, it wasn't expansion, it was regression.
It was expansion, because she continued to water. She continued, continued to be unpermitted under a commercial grow, and that is misleading information. That is in violation of everything. But, I mean, we, we need to make a decision what direction we're going, because we obviously have a split decision here. And I don't know if you guys want to consider a continuation?
I, I would like to just advise the commission of the, if you're not already aware, of having a 2-2 vote. The, the effect of that would be that the appeal's not overturned, because the action to overturn it requires three. That's how the board of supervisors operates as well, just so you're aware.
And then it would go to the board if applicant chose to appeal it further?
Sure, they, the applicant could certainly appeal to the board supervisors within the, the time period.
One more thing I'd point out to the, to the commission is that she received a notice of violation in order to abate on August 29th. And from that point on, she certainly knew she was committing a misdemeanor and had been ordered to abate. She accrued fines of $1,000 per day after 11 days of failing to abate and continued to grow.
If I could point you to the email from Sabrina Cable, who was the individual in charge of that, she says, "I will not be fining you based upon your evidence of abatement." The officer was satisfied by it, which I believe is probative.
I mean, I think, I think that's my point, too. I mean, there were, there are processes in place to deal with people who continue to grow when they're not supposed to. And those were followed in this case. And the decision was made not to fine her, although they had the power to do so. But that's, that's not the same thing as submitting a false and misleading registration for a personal grow. It's not the same.
So at that point, did they, one second, Julie, I just want one more question. They, they accepted your photography of the abatement?
Yes.
So at that point, this is the reason they did not send out a code compliance officer?
Precisely. The evidence provided.
They accepted the evidence that you provided for the situation?
Yes.
I just want to really point out, I know that issue of code compliance and abatement is kind of sneaking into the hearing, and that's why, I, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I just wanted to stop that from going too far. There is a separate appeal process for that. And I just want to make sure that we don't mix up the hearings.
Okay.
As was pointed out, it's a separate process that was followed in this case and clearly shows compliance with the law when given to Ms. Vang.
Yeah. Does, at this point, the staff or the, or the director have any further comment?
Well, I guess just to boil it down to the issue is whether or not the commission believes that the ordinance requires someone who is cultivating to register what was being cultivated? Or is the language of the ordinance suggesting that they only need to cultivate, need to register what they, what they would like to cultivate and, or what they'd like to grow in the future? I think that's a question in so simplistic terms. It was our opinion that it was the intent of the board that those who were cultivating in excess of 100 square feet were required to register as a commercial cultivator. And that was why we denied this application.
And I guess my only response to that, or any response, is the way it's written, that subsection J applies equally to this situation as it would to someone who is growing, say, 18,000 square feet and wants to only grow 13,000 square feet. Here, the difference is pretty big, 13,000 down to 100, but the language of the ordinance doesn't differentiate between those two situations. And, you know, we have been fairly careful, I think, to apply this ordinance as written. And when I do that here, I have to come out in favor of the appellate.
Any other final comments from the commission?
No.
What about the applicant? Do you have anything else you want to add?
I believe that Mr. Booster stated it very clearly, that just the language of the ordinance here requires that the denial be overturned.
I believe 1795170 stands in that the application for registration contained false or misleading information. There, there was a commercial grow there. There was no registration for a commercial grow. I find it appalling. I find it sad for those that registered, that did things the right way. And this is sad for those that tried to do this right, to, that were even having this argument. And so I am going to apply 1795170, number four, false and misleading. It will be where I'll stand.
Sorry if I ask a question? Our options are either to uphold the planning department's decision, to grant the appeal, or is there an option at this point to extend, extend the time one more time so that the planning department can further its case? And they can be equally notified at that point?
I, I don't know that that would necessarily accomplish anything. I think we've, you know, it's really more of an interpretation of the code at this point.
Well, 2-2 split would, would be part of what it accomplishes it to get by.
If the intent would be to continue it in order to have a full commission to make a decision, that would be, to, to refer back to staff traditional information, I don't know that that would necessarily provide anything. The other option would be if, if the issue of, is intent of the board and this, you know, an action, one way or the other. And if it's 2-2 at this point, it would be likely that no motion would, would get a majority so that the planning department's action would stand, then the applicant would have an ability to appeal that to the board. So I think the options would be to take a motion, see if anything passes. Nothing passes, then the, you could then decide to continue it, to wait for a full commission, or leave your action as essentially upholding planning commission, or planning department's action.
I, I actually also think that the planning commission has discretion to continue the hearing on good cause. So if the planning commission did feel that the notice to the applicant was inadequate based on the notice of the reason for denial, I think it also does have discretion to continue to allow preparation for the second basis that wasn't notified. So, I mean, I do think there's fairly broad discretion if the planning commission wants to, to request a continuance.
Well, I don't think there's anything in here that's going to change. We, we have an appeal before us. We have a denial based on two issues, according to the resolution. It's a matter of interpretation as to whether or not the application was false or misleading versus it's okay for it to be false and misleading, because it doesn't matter if you lie. You get to wait all the way through the season and then be told when to take it out. I believe, by reading this, that it point-blank says, failure to comply with this requirement of this chapter is that she applied for 100. She knew she was growing 13,000 without a commercial registration. I believe that was misleading information. I believe she did not comply with the requirements of chapter 17.95. I don't think anything is going to change in interpretation. Kelly is interpreting it in another direction, and so it's been. So for me, I don't think anything's going to change. And it's not the end-all. Mrs. Vang can send her representative to the supervisors and appeal it there and find out further intent, if that's what they would like to do. There is, appeal processes in place. And if our decision isn't the right one and we're split, then the supervisors or the final say. I don't, I, that's, that's a great process.
We don't have any assurance that we would have a, a full representation on the commission in a future meeting anyway, do we?
No.
No.
And so we may be here in two weeks with the same four of us.
Yeah.
And so it seems to me the better course would be to, I can make a motion that, to uphold the appeal, and it won't pass.
To uphold the appeal, or, or, or the planning director?
Uphold the applicant's decision, grant the appeal. And somebody else can make a motion to deny the appeal, and that won't pass, and then the record's clear.
So was that a motion that you made?
I will, I do make a motion to grant the appeal.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it now.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
No. So that's kind of what we thought would happen. Now, is there a counterproposal, a different... Now, is there a counterproposal, a different motion?
I'll make a motion to uphold the planning department's recommendation.
I assume, Ms. Chairman, I can second it.
You can second it, yes.
I definitely second it. So all opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
So this action effectively denies the appeal. The appeal... This action may be appealed within 15 calendar days to the Board of Supervisors by filing an appeal application pursuant to county code.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give me a break. Please.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, sir.
About a five-minute break has been requested, so we'll adjourn for five minutes. Please hurry back.
It's not over.
For today, yeah?
Yeah.
Two-twos.
We did need to announce that, though, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, back on our schedule here with number two. Hearing was continued, so the number three item is a zoning amendment and ag preserve application for Allison Charter Smith and Anthony... Oh, boy.
How is it? Janischer.
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 Shem.
Janischer. Yeah. What is called Anthony?
Gina?
Okay.
Go for it.
All right. So the ag commissioner's office received an application for a new ag preserve consisting of 200 acres of land up in the Mountain Ranch area, parcel located at 1374 Hubbard Road. We've got 200 acres, two separate legal parcels. There is evidence of prior ag production that has demonstrated that they are able to meet the minimum annual income requirement for the ag preserve. And if you care to know a little bit more about their interesting ag production, they're very diversified. I'm sure Allison would probably be happy to give a little explanation. I had a very nice conversation with her about all the things that they're doing, and I found it very interesting. So in addition to the ag preserve contract, as I said before, that did come from the ag commissioner's office. It did go before your ag advisory committee. They did consider it, and their recommendation to the board is to establish the contract. In addition to the contract, because the property is not... has not previously been in the ag preserve, we must zone the property accordingly to signify the Williamson Act. So the appropriate zoning for those parcels would be to rezone them to AP, Ag Preserve. So that would be from unclassified and TP, timber production, to the Ag Preserve zone. If we want to get a little bit more into the timber production situation, there was a previous timber management plan that was approved back in the '70s for this particular piece of property. The timber production at this point is unknown. Allison and Anthony purchased the land with the intent of continuing their agricultural production as they were in a different area of our state, but they did not have any intention of continuing to manage the land for its timber. So basically, it would go from the timber production into the ag preserve. It's kind of a, you know, a push, if you will, in respect to the taxes and what you receive from the land for those different categories. Do you have any questions?
That doesn't influence or change any of the requirement for the annual income?
You mean for the... There was... Unlike the ag preserve, the timber production zone is not exactly the same thing. It's not a contract like the ag preserve. Basically, there was a management plan, timber management plan, that was reviewed and approved by the board that basically said, "This is how I'm going to manage this land for timber production." It's been sold over the years, and as I said before, the actual management of the land and timber production is unknown at this time. What I have found through previous investigation, if you will, that there's really seems to be kind of a lack of accountability for that management plan. It's actually a plan that's held by Cal Fire, so it's not something that, unlike the Williamson Act, where individuals that are in the Williamson Act have to report to the ag commissioner their annual income of production from the land, there's no accountability for the timber production zone and in relation to that management plan. So there's no accountability back, you know, to say, "This is what we're doing, and are you abiding by the plan?" So in this case, I think it's better that we have that accountability. They've indicated that they want to put the land into agriculture production. They've obviously, through last year's crop production, have demonstrated that the land is capable of being viable agricultural land. In addition to a feasibility study that was done by our farm advisor, is indicating that for purposes of grazing land, that they have the ability to meet those minimum requirements of $2,000 income.
Okay. Before we go to the applicant, does the ag department have any comment on this? It's gone through your organization, I believe?
The ag advisory committee approved this application. We like the fact that she had farming experience in Santa Cruz, where she comes from, and she had a farm there. And basically, she's transferring her operation from over there to Calaveras County. She applied for a producer's certificate where she would put the crops that she was going to be raising. We had gone up and visited her property. She was actively improving her property and in a diverse operation, and she's done everything that she needs to do as far as we're concerned to demonstrate that she's performing the agricultural arts on her property. Thank you.
Now, the applicant is going to entertain us next?
Hello, my name is Allison Charter Smith, Mountain Ranch. Did you want me to speak about what I'm doing or...
Sure, they'd be interested.
So we started farming in 2010. We come from Felton in Santa Cruz County, which is where I've been selling at the Santa Cruz Farmers Markets for... since 2011. And I continue to do so. Every Saturday, I go down to the Santa Cruz Markets and sell at the Santa Cruz Farmers Markets down there. The... We raise... We do several things. As we said, we're a diversified operation. So we grow vegetables. We're planting a orchard, which will be cherries, which is what we had before. We had about 100 tree... About 120 trees in Santa Cruz County, and we're going to grow similar something to that with Asian pears and certified organic cherries. We also raise livestock for meat, wool, and breeding stock. So I raise large black hogs for meat and breeding stock. I raise baby doll Southdown lambs for wool production. I sell comforters, yarn, pillows at the farmers markets, as well as I sell the breeding stock of those animals. I also raise chickens and ducks for eggs, which I sell at the farmers markets. And then I also have dairy goats as well as, you know, other livestock, so.
Is there a spring on that property?
There is. We have two. We have a well as well as a artisan spring.
Any other questions from the planning commission?
This property is not in Mountain Ranch, is it?
No, it's technically in Sheep Ranch.
About four or five miles east of Sheep Ranch?
Yeah, it's actually 5.5 miles east of... Wait, at the very end of Armstrong Road.
What's really odd is when you... When I've accessed the assessor's record, the assessor's record shows the mailing address at Sheep Ranch, but it shows the situs in Mountain Ranch. So I don't have any explanation for that, and I think that's why we're finding the discrepancy as we've noted before.
Because the resolution, draft resolution describes it as being in Mountain Ranch, and it most assuredly is not.
Yeah. She's in District Two.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the planning commission? Okay. What about the public?
Good morning. I'm Tim Ladish from Sheep Ranch, and I just wanted to... We claim them as Sheep Ranch. And when the Sheep Ranch Community Plan was first posited, it included a broad swath of property out Armstrong Road that I believe would have included this property. And at the time that the Sheep Ranch Community Plan was reached by consensus by all the members of the Sheep Ranch Community that were present at the meeting, which were like 32 or something, the... That plan included an encouragement for just this sort of growth of agricultural activities out there. So as far as the Sheep Ranch community is concerned, this would have its full endorsement, and we claim it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good morning. Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Excuse me. I just wanted to support this application for an ag contract and zoning amendment. Very enthusiastic about these industrious people coming to our county. They're doing an awful lot with that land. I think it's wonderful to see such a diversified operation there. Very impressed by the production already to date this year, the amount of products and income that they've already put forward on this property. So I think this would be a wonderful addition to our county and an excellent example to other potential entrepreneurs in our county as to what can be done here on a couple hundred acres of land. So I'd like to encourage this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for your decision. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to uphold the planning department's resolution.
You want to amend it to strike the words "in" Mountain Ranch?
Yes.
Could catch you. I'll second on that with the amendment. And I just want to say personally, I'm very happy that owner of our property, and I'm very in support of somebody that's willing to go out there and do the hard work to reap the benefits off the land that they live on, and it's a good positive step forward, and a lot more people could do the same.
Okay, we have a motion? In a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations.
So this will be scheduled, because of the zone change involved and the contract needs to go to the board, will be scheduled in December with the Board of Supervisors?
Uh, no, actually, I was very aggressive. Sorry, I ended up with a time crunch, and I've already pre-noticed this meeting for November 22nd, understanding that if things didn't go well for them here, that we would have the ability to pull that back. But it's already been noticed for the board November 22nd.
Okay. Okay, the next item of business, number four. It's county-initiated zoning amendment for the Winkler business downtown.
Yes, are we taking this item? Madeline is out. She is on the train.
How's it going?
Young boy. So this is a county-initiated zone change from R3 PD to C2. It was a mapping error done some time ago. It's a reaper building downtown on Main Street. It's fully developed with commercial building. It's just correcting an error on the map. The exhibits in the staff report demonstrate where it's located, and it's just a cleanup zone amendment. So unless there's any specific questions about that, we recommend that you forward a recommendation to sign a resolution or to adopt a zone change from R3 PD to C2.
And the owners were notified of this change?
Yes.
They're all good?
They're all good.
Okay. I'm good.
Is there any public comment on this issue? If not, we'll forge ahead. Do we have a motion?
Is all the wording correct? I just want to check with you before I go ahead and make a motion to uphold the planning department's recommendation. I'd like to make a motion to uphold the planning department's recommendation.
With Kelly's approval, I'll second. He's looking.
And who's the second?
Lisa.
Oh, you.
That'd be me.
Okay. It's moving second, and all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Which, no. We don't have a study session scheduled, so a final public comment period. For anybody in the public who would like to bring up anything that is not on today's agenda, here's your opportunity. Don't all get up at once. There being none.
Just a real brief report on the planning department. We are now down two people, one temporarily. We'll start recruitment for a new planner three as soon as we can. Unfortunately, it's not a good time of year to be recruiting for a new position, so we'll probably hold it open until January, at least by the beginning of the new year. With the passage of Measure C and the failure of Measure D to pass, we're pretty much just operating as we have been for the past several months as far as cannabis is concerned. We've got the urgent ordinance that will be in place until at least March 15th, which time the board can take it up to extend it or not. So we're just continuing to process those applications that we have. I'm sure we'll be seeing more... We're sort of beginning to sort of digest the elephant, as I call it, and working through a little more quickly some of the... Everything's sort of coming together, the inspections, the background reports, our review of it. So we'll start seeing more actions, final actions, taken on approvals and denials, which means there may be more appeals coming forward. But for the most part, the cultivation season is over, harvest is done, and we're sort of hoping that those that get denied, that took their crop in this year, will move on to some of their greener pastures than here, pun intended. And... But we'll, you know, at this point in time, we'll have to look closely at Measure C, how it applies to the cultivation. I'll be working with county council and task collector on that to ensure that that's implemented as written is intended, and we have a process to get that through. My understanding is it applies to this year's crop, so it's not prospective, it's the other way around, that... So those who grew this year will be sent to the task come next spring. And we've begun the process on the EIR, working with consultants. I met with consultants a couple weeks ago, and that's moving forward. So hopefully, we'll have something out in the middle of next year, be able to move forward with getting that completed. I don't really have anything else. Unless there's any questions you have.
So many.
Does it, are we likely to be in a situation that Amador County is, where the EIR process got sidetracked?
I hope not, but the, the EIR process, you know, can be contentious, especially in something like the general plan. We're going to try to make sure that it adequately covers all of the issues. We don't want to leave the county open to litigation because of inadequate document. There may be disagreement on policy, but we want to make sure that the document addresses all of the environmental issues. And that's just something that we're working on closely with the consultants, our council, we have outside councils helping us on that as well. So we will dot our i's and cross all of our t's and make sure that procedurally it's done correctly, and we intend to make sure that all of the issues are adequately addressed. It's just a long, lengthy process to get through, and we hope that the, the debate then will be focused not on inadequacies of the environmental review, but the policy issues that the county needs to address.
Any other questions of the planning director before he gets away from us here?
No. Thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
I do have a question.
Oh, yeah.
How, on the application process, it was slow-going because everybody had a learning curve to get through. How many have been processed at this point or partially processed?
Well, partially processed, all of them.
Okay.
Complete to final action. I think we're somewhere around maybe seventy or eighty. I don't have an exact number. We've been able to get through, or we're getting through a lot of the personal caregiver grows right now. The biggest hang-up has been just trying to get the inspections done for the commercial grows, and that's just taking a lot more time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commission comments?
No.
Okay, then we, we stand, all right, for two weeks?
Yes, we have a meeting in, no, no, two weeks from now, it's Thanksgiving, so our next meeting will be.
December.
December.
So just have one more meeting this year, and that's it?
Well, we have two dates in December that are, the twenty-second, I believe, is the fourth, and we'll see, we'll sort of check on the eighth, whatever date that is, to determine whether or not we need to hold a meeting or cancel the last meeting of the month. It's the week before Christmas. Christmas falls on Sunday this year, so.
So we have items for the eighth already, don't we?
We do have items for the eighth, so we'll definitely meet that, and we'll see if we need to hold a meeting on the twenty-third. So we've been bumping out till the next year.
So are, we're not meeting on the twenty-third, or we are? We're normal?
This month?
Yeah.
No, Thanksgiving.
Okay.
You're happy to come down here, we'll leave turkey leftovers for you.
Oh, really?
As long as I don't have to cook.
No, no meeting on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Or twenty-four.
No other comments? We are adjourned.